All right, for this evening's agenda, a couple of corrections. In the section on approval of minutes, item C and item E we are not going to do tonight. Those two are being taken off. And item D, which reads Finance Subcommittee Meetings, should read School Committee Meeting Minutes. We have some Finance Subcommittee Meetings that are posted as full school committee meetings in case members wish to show up who are not on the Finance Subcommittee. That was one of those meetings. And so we've actually had a quorum of school committee members, so we need to vote it as a school committee meeting. We're treating the meeting as a Subcommittee in any case because we'll reaffirm any actions at the full school committee. For legal purposes, it was a full committee meeting. Anything else for tonight's agenda? Any additions, corrections, amendments? Bring none, then we'll move on. Citizen Speak is our first item. I don't see anyone for Citizen Speak, so we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. So we'll start with our retreat minutes of July 27th. Motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Kelly, second, Ms. Sheridan. Any additions, corrections, amendments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the minutes of July 27th?
No, it's not there.
Are you abstaining? Ms. Bagley-Jones.
I'm not there.
Next, the school committee meeting minutes of August 30th. Accepted.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sheridan, second.
So moved.
Mrs. Cahane, seconds. Any, again, additions, amendments, corrections to the minutes of August 30th? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes of August 30th? Opposed, abstaining? Kristen, which were you?
I was abstaining, I'm sorry.
Abstaining, all right. So that's 501 with Ms. Jones. And the other one is the school committee meeting minutes of July 26th. Again, I would accept the motion to approve those. So moved, moved by Mr. Cahane. Sorry, second by Mr. Walker. Yes, Ms. Kelly.
I think I would just ask that the heading become just the full school committee meeting as opposed to the sub-finance.
Okay.
So without parentheses.
It should say Milton School Committee.
Right.
Change heading for final draft?
Yep.
Correct.
Just erase the second and third lines, basically. Just leave it as Milton School Committee. Anything else on the minutes of the 26th?
Move to accept the minutes as amended.
Twenty-six or twenty-seven?
I think they were moved already.
How did I miss all these meetings?
As amended. Any other corrections, amendments to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of the minutes as amended? Opposed, abstaining?
I'm sorry, I'm looking for it.
Which, I'm sorry Glenn, I'm looking at-
July 26th.
July 26th. Oh, those are the 7:00 AM meetings?
Yes.
Oh, that's why I wasn't there.
Let's try this again. All those in favor?
Sorry.
Opposed, abstaining. So it's 402, with two abstentions, Ms. Sheridan and Ms. Bagley-Jones.
I couldn't figure out how I had to still lose meetings.
And we will move on to the superintendent's floor.
Thank you Chairman Pavelcik. Out of order, I'd like to invite, to join us at the table Milton High School's principal, Dr. Joseph Arangio, and our athletic director and PE department head, Steve Traister. And I believe Steve Traister has placed a packet in each one of your seats. We asked Dr. Arangio and Steve Traister to join us tonight. We've had a very positive opening in the Milton Public Schools. We have a few issues around transportation and residency we're going to discuss, but I thought after last week's football, home football game and the enthusiastic boosters event at the football game, the positive responses I've been receiving from all levels that to have the high school principal and the athletic director here to kick off the season. We talk about our athletic budget and our user fees to have Steve here, and Joe's impressions of the beginning of school would be a positive beginning. So why don't I turn it over to Steve Traister and Dr. Arangio.
Okay. Well, thank you. I'll just go off with my packet. We're off to a good start. All the teams have now begun their seasons as of yesterday. On the second page of the packet, you'll see our participation numbers. Last year in the fall, we had 354 athletes. This year we have 355. We had about 370 sign up and through choice of their own or cuts unfortunately. We've cut it down to 355. If you go down to the bottom, I have the free and reduced lunch numbers of the last couple of years. My first year as athletic director, I didn't really chart it. The second year, we didn't get the word out as well, I don't think. There wasn't as good a communication on my part, and we only had about 4% or 5% of the student athletes with free or reduced lunch sign up for sports. And in the last couple of years, you can see we're right around the school average, which is around 11%. So, and that's what we had. We had 36 kids request the waiver this fall. That doesn't mean all 36 are still playing. It could have been some of the cuts, but we're right around that average of what we've talked about. So those are the numbers over the last couple of years. We're still tabulating and getting the user fees up to the business office. We're in the process of that. Yep?
Any idea why cheerleading seems to have dropped rather dramatically?
Nope. I don't have a clear cut. Those numbers have gone down. If you looked at girls' SARCA, they were up two years ago, they go down. I think just some things are cyclical. There's no hard evidence of why they've gone down.
I'd be interested in that.
Okay. Yep, we can look into that.
It's half of what it was in 2007, 2008, and that's a pretty big drop from '09, '10, and '10, '11.
Right. Yep, I can definitely look into that.
Any other questions on that?
Yep.
I actually have a question too. I was looking at this, and this is so exciting to see all these kids involved in athletics because I think it's so important. I wondered what kind of recruiting was done, is done, on an ongoing basis with kids to participate in sports?
Well, we, during the offseason, coaches usually have, for the fall, they usually meet in the spring to get their teams kind of set and some logistics set up. We can, our coaches all go down to the middle school. The old rule and the state MIA rule is they couldn't go down before June 1st. Now they've actually pushed that back to May 1st. They're allowed to go down and talk. So we had all our coaches go down, set up meetings down at Pierce Middle School to talk to eighth graders and bring them the packets. Actually cheerleading starts in, is there an MSSA, not a MIAA sport. They actually have their tryouts in June for their sport. But that's what goes on with that. And like during the fall, the winter coaches will meet with their kids. And by MIA rule, you're only supposed to really meet with them once as a kind of a recruiting pitch.
I guess I'm wondering if there are kids in the high school that maybe would really benefit from it, that if there's a teacher or someone might know a student, would someone reach out to them and say?
Yeah, that happens all the time, I think. And we have enough coaches spread throughout different sports and different levels that I think we reach the kids. And with the communication that we do now through the internet, through the phone calls, I think more kids get more of the information than they used to as well about sports.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So Steve, the other thing I'd be interested in is when you do the winter update on the free and reduced, so you said this is the number of waivers that were requested?
Yep.
Which is good, that's a very good figure. Also be interested in the number of kids that are actually playing, so what waivers were requested and what kids actually made the cut, as you said.
Yep. Okay, I can definitely work on that. And we also had 10 bridge students that were in the bridge program sign up for fall sports as well. And they get, for being in the bridge program, they sign up without their fee. And we had one MFE winner on their raffle sign up that did not have to pay.
And so to Steve's point, the bridge program, as you might remember, over the last four years, we identify students going from eighth to ninth grade that might benefit from a program in the summer. And then the two Milton High School staff members serve as mentors for those students. And again, my philosophy that if you're involved in athletics, clubs, and activities, you're going to achieve at Milton High School, that's another way that we encourage those students to get involved. And so we waive the fee for those particular students to be involved.
Yep, Ms. Sheridan.
I'm sorry, I have a bunch of questions. So rugby and crew aren't on here.
Well, they're down at the bottom underneath, and they're still club sports.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And rugby is just a spring sport, that's why I put it down at the bottom anyway. Crew is in the midst of their signups. Last year they had 16, right now they're hoping for about 18. There's about five or six kids that have been cleared through our process, but they had another meeting the other day. They were kind of in flux with a coach, but they are starting, and Mr. Ree and the Crew Crew are getting started. They expect to have about 18 on top of the 355 kids. Those numbers up top do not include them because we call them club sports right now, but that's why I added those in the spring down there. But crew is now going to be a fall and a spring club sport.
And I have one other, I'm sorry. So I just wondered if, and you don't have to speak to this tonight, but I would be really interested to see what the diversity is in the students that participate in our sports.
Yep, I don't have those figures.
No, of course you don't. So if you can just get it to Ms. Gormly and she can forward it to us, I think that would be really helpful.
Absolutely.
Got a question?
Yes, actually I have a couple, but I can, you know, go give other people a chance. You said crew is still a club?
Yep, they're a club sport.
Okay, and what's the cost now for crew?
The crew, I think they kept it at 700 for this season and this year.
Okay, because I was just confused, if it's a club?
Yep.
Isn't it usually cheaper when it's a club?
It's a club sport, and there's, in order to do that-
Versus a club?
Right.
Okay.
It's a club sport. And them and rugby are fully self-financed.
Yes, yes.
Has nothing to do with our club.
Right.
So the way they set it up and the crew people with the equipment, the travel, the coaching and all that, that's what they came up for a figure.
Okay, so I was confused because you called it a club, but it's a club sport versus-
Yep, diversity sport.
Okay.
Right, an athletic sport.
And what's the cost to Ms. Bagley-Jones's point of rugby?
Rugby was 150 last year. So we didn't go what the athletic fee of 250 was, and we went a little above what the, and that was all based on our projections on what uniforms, transportation, equipment, coaching, and all that went.
Okay. And on the crew, if folks are on free and reduced lunch, would they get a discount on crew?
Yep, and they go to, I don't even take their money on that. That goes through the crew club. And then if there's any problems, they can get that and they can get a free and reduced-
But is there free and reduced available for that?
Yep, they definitely help students.
Okay, great.
And to Ms. Bagley-Jones's, do you mind?
Go ahead.
Was there some scholarshiping?
That's-
Yeah, they had some, they had some money left over and some money that was donated to help people that needed help in crew.
That's what I was looking for, okay.
One more?
Two more questions?
Go ahead.
Okay. The evaluations of the coaches?
Yep.
What happens with all that data? I know I get them as a parent of two athletes. What happens to it all? Where does that go?
It goes-
Is that disseminated in any way?
Yep, it's given to the coaches.
Okay.
And I use it as a teaching tool, not as a evaluation product on my part. The coaches get to see it and look at it, and they also get, not just yours, but the students. All the students, we call the students up during an activity period, and they take the survey as well. And this is a little bit more detailed than the parents' one.
Okay, okay.
One more?
Fundraising.
Yep.
I know the Walk-a-Thon is February 11th, Mary?
February 11th.
Okay, not too early to start talking about it.
I was going to talk about it later.
Okay, good, just want to put it out there. And my concern is, we don't have anybody to do the banners anymore, right? The volunteers?
I don't think I have.
And so I just, it's been on my mind because we've really depended on the Walk-a-Thon and the banners for our budget for the sports. So I just want to put it out there that, is there any brainstorming we could do outside of this meeting in terms of, I think it's a professional job. I don't think it's a parent volunteer doing the banners. I really don't. And so we're going to lose a big chunk of money that we've been counting on if we don't have somebody doing the banners, so.
So to Ms. Bagley-Jones's point, we have, for the public to know, as if Mr. Gillis was here, he'd say we run an 800,000 to million dollar athletic program with, from the school budget, a small portion of that. And the community and the school, the teachers and the students have stepped up. We now have the annual Walk-a-Thon in February, and that, all those funds go to fund athletics, clubs, and activities. Two nights, we have the talent show where the staff has stepped up, and those funds go to athletics, clubs, and activities. And then what we had was a banner program. Anyone who's been in the field house or driven to the high school sees the banners. It was fabulously successful, a lot of work, run totally by a parent volunteer, Kate Sumner, whose children graduated. And we had lots of leads, but once we sat down with people, they realized what a huge job it was, and they quit before they started. All good intending people. So to Ms. Bagley-Jones's point, at Finance Subcommittee, we have a proposal to salary somebody to run that program, and the salary would come out of the funds that we raised from the banner program. Because, again, we raised a tremendous amount of money, so much money from that that we're eight, we think we're going to be able to do that. So we did some research and worked percentage and how to do that because we didn't have any idea.
Great.
And then we would be remiss, Steve Traister's going to talk about the Boosters Golf and Tennis Tournament that's coming up.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Walker.
Just, I want to go back to the coach evaluations. I think it's a great approach to use those as a coaching tool, no pun intended.
Yep.
But is it reasonable to assume that if there is some consistent negative feedback from parents, students, both, that it might become a performance issue?
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, if we see a pattern in anything.
Okay.
Yep.
Great.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
Two more things. One, when I said salary position, Mr. Phelan corrected me, it would be a stipend, and we'll make a proposal to Finance Subcommittee. And to Ms. Bagley-Jones's point, and for Dr. Arangio, the fundraising got so large at Milton High School that we were getting a lot of parent complaints, that students were asked to sell door to door and to relatives, and we pulled back, we eliminated all of the, as, to my knowledge, as much as we could, all of the using the students to sell. And we rely on those four large fundraisers. And the parental response, Ms. Bagley-Jones, that we've gotten from parents has been phenomenal. They're willing to commit, they all understand what the large fundraisers are, they still have can and bottle drive and car washes, but it's not asking you and your families to sell every time you turn around.
Such a relief.
It is.
Okay, so the signups went very well. I think the communication methods we used, the phone calls, I'm sure some of you got the multiple phone calls and multiple emails over the summer. Everything's on the website and everything is communicated, so the signups went very well. Everything is on our headline webpage as well. One of the things that Superintendent Gormly wanted me to discuss, the new concussion laws. All the coaches have to take a test, an educational course test, as well as parents and students. The coaches, trainers, athletic directors have to pass in to me or an administrator their certification. I just added mine so you can see what it is, and they're good for a year. That law started last November, and so now the fall, now we've gone through a whole cycle of, a whole year of coaches doing that. The parents and students now have to do it. When they talked about it in the spring, the legislation first said we had to collect every student and parent's certificate. They've said now we don't, and there's a sign off. That's why I added the permission form. There is a sign off, and some of you who do have kids, I know you came in and saw that. We have the websites right next to where the student's signature and the parent's signature is for them to take it. Because it's a 20-minute educational course that just shows what the signs are, how to diagnose it on your own, and to see if you'll need help, and for the children to be educated in some of the symptoms and what goes on later in the recovery. So that's what that test is. Every one of the coaches in Massachusetts has to take it, whether they're a volunteer, paid assistant, or whatever. At every level, they have to take it, and we have them all on file for our coaches. Communication that went out with that was also on the phone calls, as well as the information sheet that I've put online with a bunch of concussion information from all sorts of sources. We are also doing the impact testing again this year. We started that last year. It's a baseline test that students take. That way if they do get a concussion, it can help the doctors in their evaluation of when the student can come back. The old way used to be, it's two weeks. Well, some kids recover a little sooner, and some kids, it takes a longer time, and the different levels of concussions can lead to that, helping with that testing. So this year we're doing the ninth and 11th graders. Last year we tried to pick certain sports that we could do. Now we're doing every ninth and 11th, and it's on a two-year cycle. The tests are good for two years. So next year the ninth and 11th graders will take it as well, and we'll have all those on file. I just added the concussion numbers from our trainer that we've had the couple of years. Again, those can be very flexible, that, I mean, sometimes we eat a lot of broken bones, sometimes we have injury free seasons, the same thing happens with concussions. Our protocol is, obviously, the trainer's the first line. He usually sees them on the field if possible. We do not let anybody come back without a doctor's note. We've been ahead of the legislation for a couple of years. Our trainer Phil Genotasio follows everything to the T. His impact testing that he runs, he gets it right to the doctor as soon as a student comes in with a concussion. He notifies the nurse, Margaret Gibbons, immediately, who then is supposed to get to the guidance and the teachers of that student in terms of the recovery and when they're supposed to be able to come back. Because with concussions, obviously it's a brain injury that can affect cognitive and a lot of things, not just the sports. So that's our protocol. We've also been in touch through Jason Buford in our Wellness Committee. He has set us up with Dr. Ben Thompson from the Milton Hospital. He was actually at our home game the other night. He's a Milton resident. He went through the Pierce School here. Unfortunately, he went to a private school after that. He's up at Milton Hospital right now, and he is setting up a rehab facility.
That's great.
He's trying to reach out to the community, and I have those on the back page. That's for people to be able to go up and see him on Saturday mornings. Phil, our trainer, could reference people if they couldn't get to their primary or they couldn't get to somewhere and you needed to see someone in the weekend. Phil also has his number, so he can call him. So it's a great, it's a great marriage with the hospital, which I know Ms. Bagley-Jones has always wanted to do with the Wellness Committee. And thanks to Jason Buford for that, and Dr. Ben Thompson. So that's all the stuff that we're updated, and I think we're doing a very good job, as good as a job you can with the concussion stuff. Just want to talk about the Boosters real quick. Gary Kelly is our new president. The membership, I guess, is going well. They had a bunch of new members sign up the other night at a kickoff tailgate, which I'll talk about. Their monthly meetings are on Tuesdays, the first Monday of the month, the first Tuesday of the month. They had their first one last night. They had a kickoff tailgate, which they plan on doing as an annual event for the first football game, the first night football game, that way to bring lots of kids of many levels, you know, younger kids. They had face painting games. They had a lot of teachers that took part of that and helped out. They had a special tent for different food and beverage other than their normal concession stand, and they get a lot of their memberships kicked up, and it was a very good atmosphere. It was a beautiful night, a lot of young kids, face painted. It was just a lot of excitement. Some kids were down at the SARCA game before that, so it was a good night. And for pulling it off as quickly on the first night, I think it's only going to be better in the future. And it became, hopefully it can become a real community event instead of just a Milton High School event. The golf and tennis tournament, as Superintendent Gormly and Ms. Bagley-Jones talked about, is Tuesday, October 18th. In the last couple of years, we've had good members, good numbers. We've had over 120 golfers last year. I think the limit is 24 tennis players. We've hit that every year. We're looking for golfers, tennis players, sponsors of holes, sponsors for raffles. And John Davis is running the golf part of it again in Cararuso. For the last four years, has done a great job with the tennis tournament. And their email is swingforsports@miltonboosters.com. Swing for sports, swingforsports@miltonboosters.com. They've set up another email, so you can get all the information there. On my website, or the athletic website, up in the corner is a link to the Boosters website, and they can, all that info is on our athletic site. And all our schedules are on the front page of the Milton Public School website. If you hit the department, you can go right to athletics, and you can click right on it, and that goes right to highschoolsports.net, and it's also on the headline athletic page.
You mentioned the golf tournament, you didn't mention where.
Oh, sorry about that, yep. And I want to thank Wallaston generously donated, and Curry is also sponsoring again. Great partnership with that. It is at Wallaston as well as the tennis tournament that same day. Hopefully we have a great day. Last year, if you remember, the first one was actually called because of snow, and we had a better day the next week. We had a great, a great week. And just, it's never too soon to think about it, but the Walk-a-Thon will be Saturday, February 11th, in the field house. We went back to the field house last year, and I think it was, that's where we had it the first year. We had a little lull the second year outside. I think the timing is right in between the winter and spring sports, and it was a great event inside, and I think it'll be a great event again this year.
If I might. And we'd be remiss if we didn't recognize a school committee member who's left us burned lovely for initiating that relationship with Wallaston Golf Course, Golf Course?
Yep.
And that relationship and their generosity, and President Ken Quigley and Curry College, they really, on behalf of the Milton Public Schools, enable us to raise those valuable dollars to fund the sports program. And the Boost, and we would be remiss if we didn't give credit to school committee member Kristen Bagley-Jones, who, single-handedly, with her friends, started the Walk-a-Thon that-
Laura Kessler.
And Laura Kessler.
It was all Laura.
And Dawn Jones, too, that now has a life of its own. You've perfected when it happens, and it's taken off. And then you have to give the staff credit for the talent show that will be at the end of March. Dr. Arangio has been drafted. I don't know if he even knows it. And I'm urging them to have a one-night event, but I saw on the calendar, it's still a two-night talent show event at 3:00. So again, everyone has stepped up to raise those valuable dollars to fund the athletic program in the Milton Public Schools.
Mr. Walker?
Steve, is the sponsorship information on the Boosters website for companies that want to sponsor?
Yep, there's a whole page for Swings for Sports on that website, and it talks about how much it is per golfer. I don't want to say, I think it's 175, but I don't want to say it. And then that's per foursome, how much it is to be in the tennis tournament, and how much to sponsor either raffles or holes or the tennis tournament. All that is right on that website.
I just want to say, and you know I wouldn't say this if I didn't think it, but I think the communication this year in particular, it's been good, other years too, but it's been really great. As the parent of two kids, I have gotten more phone calls than I want, but it's good, and more emails, and it's really been a good thing. The communication has just really taken off. I feel like, and the schedule is really up to date, and it's just like really there, Steve. So I think there's been a tremendous improvement over the last couple of years, and I really noticed it this year. So thank you for that.
We do have some schedules floating around, but they always change. So highschoolsports.net is the most, if I change it on my scheduling system, it goes right to that. That is the best for parents, students, coaches, anybody to go to.
Yep.
He told me in back of that he was a fast talker. I'm exhausted, I think I'll sleep right now after listening. right now after listening. First of all, I am really happy to be back. As I told you last spring, it was an invitation that hit me at the right time and I was tickled pink. And I have been honestly impressed with the sincerity of telephone calls and notes and parents who stop in the morning and come out and welcome me back. It's made me really feel good. I'm pleased with the opening of school this year. It's gone, from my perspective, pretty smoothly. It's, you know, we're still in the adjustment stage, if you will. There's, we've obviously, how can I word this? We've sort of raised the level of expectation at the school, both with reference to behavior and performance for both faculty and students. And that, that sort of goal-setting, if you will, and, and what we expect folks to be able to know and be able to do, that, that raises sometimes a little bit of stress, sometimes a challenge. And some of it, some of the changes have gone pretty smoothly and have taken root. Some of them will be, it'll take a little bit longer for that to happen. But, you know, I'm, I'm really happy with the progress to date. As I tell folks, this is only the first go-round and, you know, once, once we get over this initial phase, it doesn't mean that we're going to sit back, as Bill Belichick would say. You know, you have, it's what closing is what counts. And so what happens in September and October is always a good start, but we'll keep raising the level of expectation for everyone and hope by the end of the year, we would have made a difference. I mean, my, my job is to make, to make every part of the school program better. That means not only for students, but faculty as well, to, to get them to be better teachers, to get counselors to be better at counseling, to make service at the, the school more comprehensive and, and meaningful. And if we all do that, we look back at the end of the year and in the future, we'll say, you know, it, it was better. And I'm getting the feedback that folks feel that, but the feedback has to, you know, what I see through my eyes and what I'm hearing may be two different things, but it's, so far, the feedback's been positive. So I'm happy with that. We have a way to go. And as folks are starting to appreciate that I'm relentless when it comes to school improvement. So that's about it in a nutshell.
Question, or I don't know if it's a question or comment. Last couple of years, we spent a lot of time under Superintendent Gormly's direction at improving academic achievement for those kids who really fall through the cracks, you know, and the gaps between the kids who do really well all the time and are always on the honor roll and do the AP courses, the kids in the middle, and then the kids who really don't get to that stuff. And I know that you're about improved academic achievement. Not now, but at another meeting, I would love to hear specifically what the numbers look like to you. What, what are your plans for these kids that are, they're flying under the radar, but they're concerning to all of us. And I'd love to see what we can do to pull those kids up.
The question is, you know, it's, it's on the minds of virtually all educators in leadership position. When I left Harvard this summer with a debate amongst faculty members about the, the conflict between excellence, which is, take those kids are here, who are your best and your brightest and keep pushing them. And then how do you balance that with the achievement gap, so to speak? It's a struggle for researchers. It's a struggle for professional educators. It's a struggle for parents and citizens as well. It's a long, as I told the faculty in my, my first meeting with them, eventually, once we get over some of this environmental and culture thing about climate issues and about instructional time, eventually, we get a zero in on the thing that really makes a difference. And that's, you know, the nature of the instructional task. That is to say, what we kid, what we expect our kids to know and be able to do and how they do it, what are those like? That's a very time-consuming process to have dialogue, to have faculty with enough time that they can meet in a non-threatening situation with their colleagues and talk about model lessons, things that work. You've got to get creative faculty members and they're in every building. You need to get those folks to, you talk about the kinds of things, the unique act, and the student-engaging things. Not the typical kind of thing that we see, which is teacher asks questions, student answers. And I don't mean just with one. It, they could be rapid-fire like this and it's this student, this minute, that student, the next. But ways where we get kids who are in a classroom really engaged in an, in an activity that is, dare engage themselves and amongst themselves. And how do you create those kinds of lessons and activity? That's, that's the, that's the next big step. Once we get over this, with this, I call it more piddly stuff at the beginning that sometimes bums people out, they're worried about this rule or that procedure and whatnot. Once we get over that and we get the climate issue sort of squared, and the environment piece squared away, it's, it's then to get time for faculty to have this kind of discourse. That's, that's where, long-term, will make a difference. As I said before, years ago, you know, in this profession, what I've seen over the course of time is we have lots of programs that come to the, to the door of the school, very well-intentioned, very well-meaning. Sometimes those programs take from instructional time, well-meaning, and we lose time for this and we lose time for that. And there's always this anticipation that the next program is going to really change the school and make a difference. Well, that's not what the research shows. I mean, if you really want to change a school long-term, there's three ways to do it. You recruit quality staff, you retrain your staff, and you retain your best and brightest. That's how you do it. And it's all staffing. It's about teaching. That's where you put your, that's where you put your financial legs in that basket because that's going to make the long-term difference. So that's the piece we eventually get, have to get our arms around. And I hope we can eventually get to that this year.
Thank you.
May I, to Ms. Bagley-Jones' point, we're going to have, at our next presentation, the MCAS data will be public as of Monday. And we have our advanced placement data and our SAT data will be with us tomorrow. But Dr. Arangio's first impression going over the data, it might be valuable for you to not share the data, but I don't want to put words in your mouth about the improvements that you have seen and looking comparatively at the data to other high schools, your first impression.
With reference to the preliminary data that I looked at for SAT, it's, it's bumped up both with critical reading, writing, and mathematics, which is good. I mean, you've got to take a long-term look at some of these trends. And with any, any school with any student population, you're going to see year-to-year variance. I mean, a lot of it deals with the nature of the quote, the class. I mean, teachers will always tell you, this is the class from heaven, this is the class from the other place. And there is some realism to, to that, you know, view of, and so those classes are going to give you a bump up and a bump down. You know, looking at trends is more valuable. But the SAT stuff, at least the preliminary stuff, shows progress in those three areas.
The AP.
When you look at AP data, it looks, it looks, the number of kids who are involved and what they're involved with has just gradually increased. I'm thinking when we started this 14 years ago, we probably had 100, 150 kids involved in AP classes. That number is, is gone up threefold, fourfold now. And, and it isn't like what used to happen a lot of schools. We put the kids in the classes and so we beat our breath and say, look what we have done with AP. At AP, the requirement is you go to a class, you take the AP test. And some school systems don't do that. There's a requirement here. If you're going in and you're going to get this extra, I want, I want that. We wanted it then and it's still been maintained with that standard. That standard is a, is a quite high level and you can't monkey with it. If you monkey with it, you might give a whole bunch of A's in the class, but those kids will score poorly on the exam. So the level is, is good. And over the last three years, we've had an 18% increase in the number of non-minority kids who are taking AP courses and taking the test. In the same three-year period, I believe the number and percentage of, of minority students taking it has gone up 46%. So with reference to the achievement gap, you're right. It's been sometimes neglected. We need to find ways to encourage those kids to get in. We need to eliminate any vestige of screening and whatnot. They're willing to come in, they're willing to pay the price, and they're willing to put the time in. We'll be willing to support them. But we've, we've got to find ways to just keep upping the ante and making that happen. But initially, it looks pretty good. The MCAS data looks good. So, and on those three basic indicators, MCAS, AP, and SAT, things are, things are looking good.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sharon.
I just want to say that I'm so looking forward to going on this journey, to being on this journey with you this year as you lead Milton High School.
Thank you.
Mr. Kane.
Mr. Arangio, you're correct. The feedback is, is very positive for the most part. If there's one thing that I am getting, some emails and a lot of phone calls, some are positive and some are not so positive. It's your, the elimination of eating food and drinking coffee in, during the morning hours by teachers and by students. Can you, would you explain your reasoning for, for doing that?
Surely. First of all, this, this community has spent a ton of money on this facility. You have worked wonders in the, the building that we have to do the kind of job that we're charged with. I want to, I want to keep a safe, orderly, positive school climate. I want to keep it clean and attractive. The community deserves that. The, the business of school is about teaching and learning. I don't want disruptions and interruptions to that task. I don't want to see, I don't want to see food brought into a classroom. I don't want the, the classroom soiled. I don't want things knocked over. I don't want something happening that breaks the momentum that's established by a teacher who was trying desperately to do lots of things and keep that ball juggled at the same time without hitting the floor. I don't want accidents to happen. I want, I want the building to look as clean and as positive as business-like as I can make it. Now, with reference to eating food, as I explained to my other parent earlier, if they come into school in the morning before 7:45, they can come in and we have the cafeteria open. We provide, you know, a breakfast for kids. And if they want to bring in food from the outside, come down to the cafeteria. If they want to eat a side of beef during lunchtime, that's okay. But I want the cafeteria to be used for eating and drinking. We allow kids to drink water. If they have bottled water, to bring it into a classroom, to put that there and to, and to consume it as they see fit. But I want to keep all the other stuff off the hallway floors. There are safety issues. The place is insect-bug-free. Want to keep it that way. So it's, it's, the climate is a business-like one. I want to try to build that and establish that and so that folks are focused exclusively, with a laser-like focus on teaching and learning and not in, you know, he took this and he, he has my lunch, he took my crackers. It's, there's a time and a place for that. And that's essentially what it's all about.
I was just wondering if you, have you done, have you done any research on what happens to kids that don't eat, we'd say from 6:40 in the morning to 12:30?
No, but they can, you know, my, my hope is if they, if they need to eat, they can eat before 7:45, which is when really we expect kids to be moving into class. And-
Not to cut you off, but for instance, we'd say, the kids that get on the bus. I have two kids that get on the bus, but they eat at 6:30 in the morning. And they, along with many other kids, don't eat again until at least midday or 12:30 because they have the last lunch. And for, for a 14-year-old girl that's developing, it's, it's a long time to go without food, I think. And that's the concern that a lot of parents that are calling me have. Six hours without food for, for developing teenagers, I think is a long time. I was just wondering if you had done the, any research on-
No, I, I, I don't have, I don't have any data on that. I have never worked in a school where eating mid-morning was, was a common practice. I don't know of colleagues that, that I've sort of worked with over the last few years that have had experience with that as well. So I'm kind of, I have to plead ignorance on that one.
Bagley-Jones.
I do have to echo your sentiments. I haven't gotten phone calls. I've gotten stopped at Bruegger's and the Fruit Center, which makes me want to avoid those places. I'm sitting here having a cup of coffee, but no, it's okay. That's part of the job. But parents have approached me to say they're concerned about their kid's concentration level. They have a kid who has some learning disabilities. It's hard for her to concentrate anyway. And it was interesting, I went home and I asked my kids about it and my son actually said, well, Mom, you know, you signed the handbook. In fact, you signed it as a school committee member and it's in there, you know. But they're still not happy about it, the kids or the parents, because if you have last lunch, which I believe starts at 1:15, is that correct?
No, it ends, it ends at, it ends about 1:15, starts earlier.
It starts at what time?
A little before 1:00.
I'm sorry?
A little before 1:00.
A little before 1:00. So if your kids take the bus or they leave the house at 7:15 to get there, they've eaten by 7:00, so they're going until a fair amount without food. And for some kids, that really is an issue in terms of concentration. I know if there's a medical issue, that they can go through the nurse, they can get a doctor's note, which I know parents have been doing.
Yes.
But I do think it's a concern and I, I think it needs, it would be helpful to have it explained more to the community about why.
Sure. If, when we have, if someone comes to me, as a student did just three, four days ago, with a medical issue, we make arrangements to make that happen.
And what about the concentration issue for kids that have a hard time concentrating in the first place and going along? It seems like the last lunch is the issue. That seems to be the pivotal point for many parents and kids. They have the last lunch, it's a long time to go. I don't, maybe we could just think about that piece of it and, I don't know.
I would, I would actually make a, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was talking to somebody tonight. She's, my wife's best friend, she's a doctor, and she was just suggesting that it might be good to have a step program, you know, where, where you don't allow coffee and you don't allow certain types of foods, but you might allow a, a snack bar or something. Because she also mentioned that what happens is when you don't, when you don't allow kids to eat like that, when they do get to eat, then they binge. And it creates obesity. And studies have been done on this kind of thing, I guess. And that's my only concern, along with the fact that I have to listen to it every day.
[laughing]
When, when they get home.
If I might enter in here. Dr. Arangio said, change is hard for everyone. And so we'll look at other schools. We had some discussions and people who know other high schools have never heard of food in the classrooms. And so Dr. Arangio was very tactful. And he said, a change of tide and a change of leadership brings about people having issues. So your concerns were duly noted. If any parent or guardian has an issue, they can contact Margaret Gibbons and we'll move ahead. And we'll deal on a child-to-child basis on this issue. But again, your concerns were heard and I think it's a sea change. I'll tell you the same for the public listening and for those parents and students. The same is expected out of the teachers. And when I was a principal, there was no food, no coffee, no water in the classrooms. Dr. Arangio referred to it, the business, the business of teaching and learning goes on. And again, there's a whole, there, there's a level of taking care of the buildings, but most importantly, the business of teaching and learning. And I think with that cumulative experience, I can assure every parent and guardian that we're not putting any child at risk. But duly noted, we heard your concerns and we can deal on a student-to-student basis with Margaret Gibbons. There are exceptions that can be made.
Scotty.
I think if we're entertaining looking at scheduling as an issue in terms of time starting, even how we do scheduling, it might be an opportunity to introduce what I would think may be new in high schools. But from a healthy eating perspective, they tell you to eat like five meals a day, small little meals. And if we're having students go for five hours without eating anything, that's not developing great habits. I work in, I work in the food industry, but you know, I, if I need to have a snack, I can have a snack. You know what I mean? So I would hate for our high school to be a place where we're not encouraging those healthy living habits. So maybe as part of this whole scheduling and, and, you know, time start, et cetera, that point could be taken up.
So I want to thank both of you for a very positive beginning to the school year, setting the tone and the climate. Again, Milton High School's open houses tomorrow night. So this is two nights out for both of you. And just so the public saw your faces and became familiar.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Go ahead.
First, I'm going to have Assistant Superintendent John Phelan give a brief report on full-day kindergarten and enrollment.
We have an enrollment sheet for you that's updated as of today that I would like to pass out. We have been, we have been receiving students all the way through the last week of August and as of today, placing students in our public schools. As we spoke to last school committee meeting, we are, despite the fact that we were down one position in the person who did our enrollment registration in residency, we have asked for support- for support throughout the organization between people like Jane Barrett, Colleen McDougall, Susan Higgins and the central office staff to ensure that every student is in the public school in a timely fashion. Enrollment continues to creep up in every grade level through the elementary schools and the middle and the high school. I ask, as I did last time, that our community members be patient as we enroll every child in school. We probably only have about two or three students left who need to be enrolled. And they have all been asked to provide the same residency and student record and health requirements. And the reason why they haven't been enrolled is those documents have not been brought forth as of yet. We're excited about enrolling families new to the district. And we also had some students that, and families that we asked to re-enroll as part of our residency review that added to our ability to go through these, for all, all folders efficiently to ensure that they are complete. I would like to thank the work of the guidance staff at the high school and the members of the central office and secretarial staff that supported us, as well as the support of our student resource officer who goes out and facilitates with some of our residency concerns and does home visits and works with our families as we try to support them in getting all the materials in to enroll in school. Matt Gillis has presented a memo that I believe will be presented in the sub-finance about how many kindergarten students we have. As of the first week of school, we had about 276. And we are currently rising up to, as of today, 304 kindergarten students. We had a lot of late arrivals for kindergarten and we are very excited to say that our, our enrollment is crease, creeping up to over 300, not to match last year's 340 or 335 in the year previous to that. So we are well over 100 in our K1, 2, and 3, well over 300 students in each of those classes.
So to Assistant Superintendent Phelan's point, we'll keep you abreast of this data. We track it daily. John Phelan, Sean Walsh and I sit down. We place each child according to our student assignment plan, i.e., you don't get any calls. You spent a tremendous amount of time with the prior administration, parents and educators and all of us at the table coming up with our student assignment plan. And if you look at that enrollment sheet, I again will say to you, Milton Public School parents, when they move into a district, if we've reached the class size that a particular grade is kept and we introduce class size to a parent, we say to them, "We have seats in one, two, or three other elementary schools." We offer them meetings with those principals to a parent. Milton Public School parents understand the value of small class size and that's why you can look at this chart. And for those of you who track it, you can see that it's changing daily and we're equalizing the class size across the town. It's a huge job. And again, to Dr. Aranjio's point, for teaching and learning, class size is so important at all levels, but especially when we're setting up our elementary schools.
Ms. Kelly, I have a question.
I do have a question on full-day kindergarten. It looks like at least one class has gone to the level of 23 students. Just wondering, I mean, do we have a cap in mind or how are we dealing with that if, if more kindergarten students come?
Ms. Kelly, your point is well-taken. That can't be, I know the one that Mr. Phelan just handed out says 23, but it's not going to be 23. And see at the top where it says caps? So the cap is 22. And so bring everybody back to the work that we do based on the births and working with NESTC on the anticipated enrollment so that both Mr. Phelan and Mr. Gillis's and NESTC's numbers have held almost to a number. And this influx in the last week has been something that I've never seen before at kindergarten. But Ms. Kelly has an excellent point that right now, we have those co-tots, Ms. Kelly, that can go up to 18 or 19. But we're at the point that every kindergarten is 22. And you remember with the full-day kindergarten grant, that those aides are in the classroom, 80%. So of those classes, we have, all our kindergartens, we have two co-tot. And so we're watching those numbers. And I would have to go to finance subcommittee and the school committee and we'd have to have discussions. We're right on the point of tottering. And I've looked at them and so you people at the table understand, I've said if I take two students out of every class and I went to you and made another kindergarten and brought those down to 20, but we didn't budget, you know, right now we've budgeted perfectly and we're almost going to the brink in our full-day kindergartens. So based on the, I mean, had we budgeted one more class, those wouldn't, those would have been all 20s with a few 21s. So we're closely watching the kindergarten, which is going to drive, which I know you're thinking about, the first grade. Because historically, you'd take your kindergarten and then you'd move it ahead. So this is why we put this out and we spend a tremendous amount of time in these first weeks and placing students. Mr. Phelan, did you want to address an issue?
No, I will find out why that one is a 23. This is a live document that only the secretaries and Sean Walsh have access to, that they can only change and alter. So I will find out what, what that 23, they all should be 22 or below.
So, and for you to understand, I think is valuable because we deal with the public. We make the placement. We call the receiving school, the principal or the secretary will call the new residents, make contact and set up the appointment. So when they, families do the registration, they do it through central office. And then when they've been fully vetted and approved, then they come to us, we make the placement. We don't make the call, we send, hand-deliver the folder.
Just if I may follow up, it's actually on the first, second, and third grade. The numbers in French, certainly in the first grade compared to the English are pretty stark in terms of the difference. Just to remind myself, we do not have aides in any of the French classes, is that correct?
Correct. No aides. But to Ms. Kelly's point, it's important to say that, and if you're not in this work, you don't, you don't, you're not conscious of it, conscious of it, that new residents after first grade can only move into the English classes. And so you can see, it's interesting that, remember two years ago, the issues we had around the French immersion and creating the auxiliary model? You can see that those French immersion numbers that were at Collycott and Cunningham have held at 25, so we're all 26s. I can trace where those four children are, whether they moved or whether there were issues around that. But these numbers are holding tight. And you can see the Glover, the Glover has two third grades at 26. That's the French immersion cap.
Ms. Sharon?
I just have a couple of things. One, it would be helpful if these updates could have the date on them when they, when we receive them or when they're printed. But could you give us a number of how many students you would say have start, have, have registered, new students have registered in the last, say, two weeks since, since before school started?
No, the registration with John.
Okay, oh. I'm sorry, my kindergarten.
Overall?
Yes.
The, the issue of our, the, the person who was in the position in, in how we organized our folders, some folks who may be put in their enrollment packet in July may, may not have received feedback and that we were just getting materials from them now. But I would say in the last two weeks, we have enrolled and placed K to 12 between 40 to 50 students. And that doesn't mean they just started to enroll with us, but we, we had a backlog of folks and we wanted to make sure we got everybody in by the first day of school. We worked hard to do so, but we did make folks wait if we didn't have all the material. So students have come, been coming in daily or being assigned daily in batches of like five and six as we make sure and we put students in. We are down to a handful of families that we're working with who have just come forward and took our packets to enroll in the last few days. On average, if you remember, we provide you with that list of comparative data of where students enter each grade over the last few years. So you can see not only how many new students we have to the district each year, but where they enter. We can provide that chart for you if you like to compare this school year's new student data to previous school years. We can provide that to you for the next school committee meeting. Keep in mind that we do take in new students all year round and that would just be the first quarter of how we look at it, how our new students have entered the school system and at what rates.
I guess I would just like to say also that I want to also say a thank you to all the people who chipped in and really made this registration happen. I know it wasn't easy, either in the office or for some of the citizens, but I really appreciate the fact that the people were patient and understood that all of the work that was being done, all of the information that was being requested of them is to benefit the Milton Public Schools and all of the children and all of the taxpayers in the town. And so I do want to appreciate, you know, send a note of thanks to all of those, you know, the secretaries and, and everyone who just stepped up and, and made that work happen under tight time constraints. One final question. Could you tell me how many full-day kindergarten, I mean, half-day kindergarten students we have and where they're housed? Please.
At least on the first day of school, we had three. We've had 25 new enrollees since the first day of school. I'm not sure if anybody has chosen the half-day program. They're housed in their, their particular school. We don't have a separate half-day class this year. I defer to Mary.
If I might address that. For our first two years of having full-day kindergarten, we dedicated a teacher to that half-day class. And then every one of our budget dollars is so valuable, we networked and researched with, across the state, what other districts did when they had a very small number of students enrolled in half-day K. And the majority of districts did not run a single program for students in half-day K. One year we had nine, another year we had 11. What they do is we integrate those students into the full-day program and they go home halfway through the day. And so the good news story is the families that select half-day are in their home districts. They're in the classrooms. The principals have spoken, if not Mr. Phelan, with the families. And for an array of reasons, these families, and I respect their decisions, have chosen half-day and they go for the first half-day. So they dispersed across the district, the half-day children. And I also want to say, if I might, Mrs. Kelly, you had two questions that I researched on the enrollment sheet. One, Mr. Phelan, we had a Tucker fifth grade, we, the Tucker fifth grade, we've followed over the years and one year it was 14 children. Mrs. Kelly had an excellent question. We have had, I think we traced five children just in the whole district at the elementary who have come in from Montreal or France. I said, "Now, don't tell me those five went into the fifth grade at the Tucker." And so we did, Mr. Phelan researched that with Principal Yuretsky. John, do you want to address that? That's a great question, how that 14 turned into 20.
Sure. We have had more than five French-speaking students enter the district this, this summer leading up to the school year. Several from Canada and several from abroad. And several from other communities within the Boston area who have chosen to take their children out of a private school that has a French program and enroll and live in Milton. The 20 student number in grade five, remember Kelly, is, is in relation to how we do our 70-30 in the fifth grade. So there is only 15, I believe, French students in that class. But how we, how we, so we would have a class of 26 for 30% of the day in that English five, that English five at Tucker is high. So if you compare it to what we tried to do with a better example, up in the Collycott, if you notice that we have our 70% of the day class size numbers in that 20, 18, 19, and 20 box. And to the right, we have actually the actual numbers of students who are English and students who are in the French program because that only represents 30% of their day. I just didn't bring those numbers down on this chart to the Tucker School fifth grade. Again, we will, we will edit this tomorrow when we put it on the web.
And Mrs. Kelly's other question, in the lower right corner, when this goes up, you'll see a code, well, you'll see a code at the top, UG. That stands for ungraded. And if you trace your finger down, the second to last column, if you start on the right to the number 10, those are ungraded, ungraded across the district. Now, I could do further research to find out if that was a school that classified, if you're in the first, second, or third grade, you're in an ungraded primary. And so that's, but that was a great question. I didn't know the answer and we researched that. And we'll bring down, just paralleling the Collycott and Cunningham, we'll bring down that Tucker data and find out about the Tucker number. There's a phrase when you deal with Redica, which is the piece of software, that you have rights only. The rest of us can only view it and there are only a few people who have, and to Mr. Phelan's point, Sean Walsh and the secretaries. So we'll check what happened there.
Ms. Kelly?
Two questions. And I should remember this, but it was a long time ago, last June. We didn't have to use the auxiliary model this year, right? We did? And so where is it?
At Cunningham.
At Cunningham, okay. See, I forgot already.
Remember the way the schools are built?
Right.
Collycott and Glover are four units at each grade level. Cunningham and Tucker are three units at each grade level. So the auxiliary last year, if you take note at the first grade, Cunningham has two English and two French. It was built to have three. So that's where, because of space, the auxiliary was this last year.
Okay. And the auxiliary can be a different school each year?
Correct.
And then my last question is, are there, I know we ran into the problem with, we had kids at kindergarten, a number of classes, but then when they went to go to first grade, there weren't enough comparable grade ones that, so people were upset about that? Are we, did we address that?
Yes, we did. Remember?
Should remember this, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. We, when we did the World Language Committee, we did some structural changes to how we not only organized grade one for our two programs, but we had to back-feed and decide how we wanted to organize our kindergarten to ensure that if we had four kindergarten classes, that they only moved into the following year, four sections of grade one. We did the first year have, unfortunately, four kindergartens. At Cunningham one year, moving into three first grades. So you had a natural deficit, built-in deficit. So we have corrected that. This format will stay the same. This is how the schools were built. Those are the amount of sections we'll have in each school moving forward and the parents can depend on that, that structure, being with the public schools to ensure that their child will 99% of the time be able to attend the school in their home district.
Okay. Thank you, John.
No, I shouldn't say 99. I'd hate to give a number.
Right.
A whole bunch.
I think it's just short of 100, though.
We did not have a lottery last year for grade one.
That's right.
And we had no problems placing students in kindergarten this year. And we believe moving forward that this structure will facilitate smooth transitions into kindergarten and grade one.
And it's interesting that you noted the kindergarten, Ms. Kelly, because again, they take the birth rates, they use historical data. And Mr. Phelan was telling me that I saw in the Brookline schools, a spike that they didn't anticipate from their preschool data or their birth rates. And they're creating new classes. And Mr. Gillis has, for the last two years, been almost within a child here. So if one more child moves in, forget it, Matt.
I gave you a range of 300 to 310. Almost be spot-on at 305.
So it was interesting, based, to Mr. Phelan's point, based on the data, how we anticipated one class less in kindergarten.
Interesting. Ms. Kelly?
I just wanted to ask about the Collycott first grade, where there's a class of 19 and also a class of 23. What would cause that?
I do want to address that. If you, if you look at the yellow highlighted bands, so at the Collycott School, do you see the acronym NAC, the New England Center for Children? That's a, remember, we started that preschool special ed program? That program is a direct result of our, one of our primary That program is a direct result of our, one of our primary goals, to have children with special needs remain in the Milton Public Schools. This is a wonderful success story, I feel personally and professionally, that that preschool has now moved up to the primary grades. And so those children, our goal is to integrate those children, again, for their specialists and for as much of their math and language arts instruction. So what we do is we'll target a class and we'll try to cap that class. So if you see at that first grade, Ms. Kelly, 23 and 22, that, well, first of all, we'll work on this, that English class should be 22. But we're going to hold two spots because through the year, we're looking to integrate those two children. Again, they'll be integrated for art, music, library, and gym, the specialists, but we're looking to integrate those children for language arts and math. So that tells us to hold those seats. And if you watch that, at the third grade, there's one class that's lower at, you know, so we're holding seats and those children are integrated into those classrooms. And then on the leap and step, do you see at the Cunningham? We have the program for the developmentally, children with developmental issues and children with emotional issues. So again, we try to target, if you look at the third grade, one child in step, four children in leap, that's why we're holding that number at 20, because those children are integrated into that class and we want to hold spaces. So I don't want to go to 25 in that class. I've kept that class. Because when those children are integrated, and our goal is total integration, if they're totally integrated, then they wouldn't be in leap and step. So again, it's very detailed work and we're setting every student up to succeed, every classroom up to succeed, and every teacher up to succeed.
Ms. Kelly?
So I guess I would ask that for the caps, that there be, I guess, an English cap and a French cap, just so that there's an understanding there.
Good point, especially when we're putting it on the web.
And the other thing I just want to express is that there's a huge difference for the teacher and, quite frankly, the students in a classroom of 15 versus a classroom of 25. And it pains me, you know, it's almost like we've gone the reverse. We used to have it so that the French classes were smaller and the English classes were much bigger. In an effort to get balance, we've created, you know, a system. However, what ends up happening, especially in a first-grade classroom, we have such disparity. I just think, again, it's one of those things that I think we need to think about as a system, to make sure that we're setting up all kids for success in whatever we're offering them, so.
And again, you're absolutely right. And advocating for both programs, I feel comfortable with those first-grade numbers in English, that I have seats, or I would be going to the Finance Subcommittee and School Committee and adding classes, which is disruptive to the district through the second and third grade.
I totally understand the reason we do it. I'm just saying, just as a statement of fact, a classroom of 15 versus a classroom of 25 at the first-grade level is like night and day.
Right.
And I just think we should acknowledge that.
Absolutely.
John?
Yes, I have a quick question about the NECC program, which I agree, Mary, it's a great program and I'm glad we have it. When those kids are integrated into the English classes, what kind of support goes with them? Does the NECC teacher go with them? What does that look like?
The NECC teacher or an aide.
Okay.
When they're, when these children are integrated into the class.
Okay.
Mr. Phelan?
No, I think that the students go in for varying, they have varying goals. Some of them may be academic goals, some of them may be getting into school routine goals. It really depends on their IEP. So the, some students would mainly be included in specialist classes. In the NECC program specifically, there is some academic inclusion as well, and they'd have an aide with them, one-on-one, to work them, or one-on-two, to work them into the mainstream class.
Okay.
And to that point about NECC, it was interesting, our administrative assistant, Sean Walsh, if you look at the out-of-district, and again, I'll bring you historically back to when our out-of-district number, the highest number, what does everybody remember? 84?
Yeah.
86? And we're now down to 49. And he made an interesting observation. First, when I speak with the teachers and the public, those out-of-district placements, that's not straight budget savings because we've created these programs. And the needs of these students necessitate that we build these programs and we have aides in the classrooms and we have support services. Everyone agrees. And as I said, personally and professionally, it's one of our, I feel it's one of our successes to have, build these programs and to keep these children in the district. But isn't it interesting, when you look at the elementary numbers, that that's where the reduction has been because we built the COTTS? You were told at the beginning that the COTTS would be at one school, K1, 2, 3, and disappear. You've grown COTTS at two schools, K through 5. You've grown the step program, you've grown the leap program. So when you look at where the difference is, those, that's the elementary children. And now we're going into the middle and high. And when I meet with these parents, we're doing pre-work and we're hearing their concern about growing programs because these parents have experienced, through their children have such success in our schools that they want to stay for the middle and high. But I'll tell you, for our principals and our teachers and our schools, it takes a tremendous amount of work. Mr. Phelan is working with the middle school so that we give everybody the support that every child succeeds. So we're moving those programs up to the middle, and there's one program that's moving up to the high school. Takes a tremendous amount of work to be able to meet the needs and have these students thrive in our schools and provide them every service that a private placement could and would.
Ms. Kelly?
I was going to mention the same thing, to acknowledge the success of us creating these in-house programs. And I would say that really, it's 11th grade and up is where the remainder of sort of that, you know, what we had in out-of-district placements are. So I think it's a great success story.
And to that point, we'll have a presentation for you. Last year, when, the PAC, the Special Education PAC, has a monthly meeting, and they target a different grade level. And one of the outstanding meetings that I went to, Milton Public School parent, Kevin Lanain, who is a special ed teacher at Newton High and an expert in transitioning, working with high school students and what children with special needs are going to do after high school, he did a phenomenal presentation with the parents. I learned a tremendous amount. And our new special ed director, Karen Klasby, has identified that we have work to do there for our high school students in transitioning and working with the families. And so that is when Karen Klasby comes, to give you an update, I think that you'll find it fascinating, the, there's a new court case that's driving this programming and the work that has to be done with families. We're really targeting that high school stage and after high school.
Good.
Questions?
Stay on enrollment all night. That's the work. I would, why don't I go back to happenings and we move on? I'll do happenings at the end. We move on to Assistant Superintendent Matt Gillis and an update on transportation. I might want to give the introduction to transportation. Is that all right, Matt?
Please, Mary.
We worked hard, every, all the staff in the Milton Public Schools for a smooth beginning. A smooth beginning matters to start out the school year. And last year, we, over the years, we have eliminated buses in our attempt to meet our budget, and we've done a lot of work around transportation. And last year, we had an issue around transportation, especially at the Glover School. And when I use the word, we were on the brink and we made it work. Families worked with us, the principal and the teachers worked with us, the transportation company. The problem, I can't really tell you why, in the spring became more apparent. And as we, I call it brainstorming, future problem solving, we found out that the time between the start and the ends of our schools, the high school and middle school start and end at the same time, then the Cunningham and Collycott, and finally the Glover and Tucker, they're on the same schedules. We didn't have enough time between the start and the finish of school to have the buses travel and to get to the respective schools in a timely manner. So understanding the daycare issues of our parents and guardians, we couldn't change the time. We began to talk about it last June. So we decided this fall, immediately, in October, November, we're going to study the start and ending time of our schools and get a group of parents and educators together and make a proposal to the school committee. We'll fully vet and visit each school, hear the input from the parents and guardians, and again, take into the research, anyone who has followed this topic will see that schools are trying to run to having a discussion about high school students. The research really proves that they should start later in the day, they shouldn't be the first band of students to start school. So we realized we had a problem and we started the school year. And so I want to recognize that we have had a transportation issue. What time, really, centers around elementary students at the Tucker and Glover, specifically the Glover, are getting home. We have put a tremendous amount of work into this. We've talked to Finance Subcommittee, I've talked to Chairman Pavlicek, and I want to recognize John Phelan, Matt Gillis, and our principals, Pam Dorsey, our Director of Transportation, but thank our parents, they have stayed with, guardians, they have stayed with us. We have some short and long-term plans, and we have a proposal to make to you tonight that we believe is going to solve this transportation issue problem that we have. And the problem is around, again, getting students home in a timely manner. And I'm going to turn this over to Assistant Superintendent Matt Gillis to tell you all of the work we've done, and again, we've kept you abreast of the budget requests that we're going to make. But Mr. Gillis was late tonight because he was meeting with a group of Pierce neighbors who were looking for their support to implement one of the ideas that we have that's going to contribute to the success of this new plan. Matt?
Yeah, I think Mary summarized it very well. You know, the crux of the matter is the time between the high school and middle school dismissal and when the buses get out of Pierce, because there's seven of them queued up there, and then the high school runs two buses over. Those kids, high school kids, get off and then get on the other buses at Pierce, and the last kids at Pierce that need to get on the last two buses, the high school get on, and then they all leave. Well, Pierce dismisses at 2:21, the high school minutes a couple minutes earlier, and then to make all that transition, sometimes the buses aren't getting out of there till 2:30, sometimes even a little later. And the dismissal at Cunningham Collycott is 2:44. Using Pierce as the hub or the center of town, where the buses have to spread out to all areas of Milton to transport all the kids that are signed up from the middle school, high school run, they can't finish their run in 15 minutes and be back to Cunningham Collycott on time. So some of those buses are late dismissing there, and that compounds. I think we all know what happens with traffic starting at 3 o'clock or 3:30. Every 15 minutes, there's more traffic coming out of the city as people are getting out of work and traffic just tends to pick up a little bit. So that's making the kids at Glover specifically late getting home. Sometimes they're not getting picked up, you know, and I'm disappointed to say this, and leaving the school until 3:45, and they're not getting home till, you know, 4:30, quarter or five. And that's just too long of a day for our elementary kids, and we need to, we need to structure that better. So we, like Mary pointed out, the start times, that's one option. We either need more time or more buses. We really can't change the time this late in the year because it would create more problems than we would solve. So now I'm going to bring you to the good news before I ask you to vote to transfer some money. Our special education transportation budget for those 49 kids that you see that are in out-of-district placements on that enrollment sheet, last year we spent about 1.1 million. This year, we're going to spend about 750,000, probably a little less. We rebid our existing three-year contract, and our budget of 865,000 left us, you know, a projected surplus. And I'm very confident that's going to work out, based on the kids that we have, the programs they're in, and the changes, the ebb and flow that happens in special ed. The 49 students that are in out-of-district placements today, there'll probably be another eight to 10 that kind of come and go. You know, just a brief summary on the goal of special education, especially for out-of-district placements, is to sort of put themselves out of business, to get the child into the least restrictive environment possible. We do bring kids back into the district. Kids do change programs to make progress, and our special ed department keeps up on that. And they're aware of, you know, what's right for the kids and, you know, what's good financially and socially as well. So with that being said, to put another bus on the road and each day we wait, the only good news there is it gets a little cheaper because we pay the buses on a per diem, would be about $54,000, you know, per bus. Still negotiating with the bus company, could bring that price down a bit. So I'd ask for a motion to move to transfer up to 108,000, which would give us two buses that we would start at Cunningham Collycott, turning those nine buses into 11, although I'm fairly confident we can do it with 10, to make it work so that we get all our elementary students home in a timely manner. And working with the residents near Pierce, they are graceful enough to, almost all of them were in accord with giving us a trial period to have the buses exit out in the back of Pierce, buses only, and the police department is going to work to help us with some traffic enforcement so people aren't parking there and kind of clogging up the street when there's no parking. And the traffic group is going to take a look at that, that area, and they might consider no parking signs, changing the street to one-way for certain times of the day. They're going to look at all the options. You know, we make every effort to be good neighbors, to be respectful to the parents, especially in the students. So we're really trying to make this work for everybody. It just, the way things kind of shook out this year, it didn't go as planned, and now we're trying to make adjustments on the fly. And we really only want to make the move once and make it right.
So may I clarify before we go into the fiscal part of this? At the Pierce, I know these schools were built, transportation-wise, where the cars and where the buses were going to go. But anyone who followed what we did at the Collycott Cunningham last year, putting the cars in the back and the buses in the front, to a parent, I'm still getting positive emails, safer, better. So 12 years ago, we came up with a plan. We're not married to the plan, never to reevaluate the plan. It's safer, it's better for students, it's all the way around. It was a phenomenal change. So some parent at the Pierce, the buses and the cars, for those of you who don't know, both enter and exit through the front. And you have to be there to see it. That's a very, very busy intersection. Mr. Phelan wears the wounds, and Mr. Jett of being the person in charge of this. I've witnessed it, and it takes a tremendous amount of work. So we looked at bringing only the buses, not the parents. Again, less traffic, not all the parents, just the buses to the back. And not in the morning, because the morning works, but in the afternoon, having the students on the buses dismiss to the rear of the school and get on the buses. Again, not getting in the quagmire with all of the parents, not the bottleneck up at the lights at Kerrigan's Corner. And we work with the police, and this will give us very valuable added minutes to solve our bus issue and problem, to the point, maybe we'll only need one bus. And so there are issues with the neighbors, the police. I want to compliment James Jett and Matt Gillis, who have knocked on doors, and we're at a parent, neighbor meeting tonight. We want to be good neighbors, but we think that, and once someone understands that it's really leaving school, the quagmire, and you witness it, and it's not that in the morning because we're dropping off the children, and we're going to get valuable minutes to impact the rest of the school. Matt has given me a note that the parent, the neighbor meeting went well?
All but, I'll say, one or two folks were in accord with trying for a month and then reevaluating it, and we're going to have another meeting because they want to make sure that what they call the agreements, you know, buses not idling, which there is a governor switch that shuts it off after a certain amount of time. And, you know, the drivers really don't want to idle, they're just kind of in the habit if they know they're If they know they're going to wait for more than a minute, they just shut it off. And the traffic enforcement for their neighborhood will be there to help. And Lieutenant Brian Cherry was there representing the Milton Police Department tonight, hearing everything that we did. He's talked with them one-on-one as well.
So, I appreciate-
I believe, I believe we're going to significantly be able to make this better. If not perfect, it'll be much better.
So, I appreciate the neighbors giving, working with us. And I know that you had a communication. So, we, we had, we had contacted the neighbors before you had your email. We had contacted each neighbor. But the meeting happened tonight and again, to those parents that have had their children getting home too late, we have a plan. We apologize for the time that it took us to perfect this plan, but this will solve the problem.
For purposes of discussion, I'd entertain a motion to authorize the administration to transfer up to 108,000 from the instructional services line to the special ed transportation line and authorize them to-
So moved.
Second, second, moved by Mr. Walker, second by Ms. Sheridan. Now, discussion. Ms. Kelly?
Just on the motion, can we mention that it's the expense line in both of those?
Yes, the expense line of instructional services.
In both of those, right.
Expense line, well, special ed transportation thing only is an expense line, isn't it?
On the Pierce, sorry, which way are they coming in and going out? The buses in the back?
Coming in, go ahead. Brook Road.
Only, only in the afternoon will the buses use the back of the building. And they'll enter from the Brook Road side and they will exit the Clap Street side.
And I guess that's where-
Similar to how we did it when we were in the building program.
That's where I have my question. Is there not a safety issue with having to enter the bus on the opposite side from the closeness to the building?
I don't understand your question.
The doors on the right-hand side, they would have to cross over the road and enter the bus. Would that be an issue? I'm just throwing it out there.
And the two, or the three years that we did it during the building program, it wasn't, and I believe it will be less of an issue this time because the bus students will be the only students in the back. So, all the, all the children will be on buses and there should be nobody, no pedestrians when the buses are given the okay to move. So, having them go in between and get on the buses should not be an issue, especially when all walkers and all car and pickup traffic is in the front of the building.
So, to Mrs. Kelly's point, you're right. Perhaps the buses should be told that they have to come off Lincoln or from the St. Mary's direction to pull in to the back. That's what you're talking about?
No, Ms. Kelly's talking about the, where they enter onto the bus is not, is the opposite side of where the school-
Not on the right side. If you were constructing this from scratch, you would have it the other way around. But you don't want the buses going onto Brook Road, is that what I'm understanding?
Correct.
A four-lane, four-lane highway is tough to negotiate with the amount of traffic that's there. We didn't feel that would be desirable or safe.
And to Mrs. Kelly's point, we have a, a number of staff have duty and part of staff members' duties. Everyone who drops anyone off at a school will see teachers and principals on bus duty. So, we'll have the back fully staffed and so that it's more than 100% safe.
Ms. Kelly?
And then, with regard to adding buses, 54,000 is the number we typically use for plug for teachers. And every time we're adding a bus instead of a teacher, it makes me a little anxious. I appreciate that we're in, the predicament we're in and that you folks are working very hard to solve the issue of getting students home in a timely manner. But every effort, and I know you guys are working on this, to make it 54,000 as opposed to 108,000, I think is greatly appreciated.
My hope too.
And also, if someone could just speak to the impact on special education transportation of this move in terms of dollars?
We, we procured our transportation services when the, when the old contract expired. And so, we, through a competitive process, but not the same process, we put it out there for the vendors and we weren't as restrictive in telling them on how they had to provide the service. We just wanted certain performance measures and then let them tell us what the price was going to be and how they could work that in with their other runs. And it worked out quite well for us when we, when we did that this summer. So, all of our students that are going to school, they're all going to get services and they're all going to get there, assuming the school is within the hours drive, you know, on a straight shot, they're all going to get there within the, within the one-hour timeframe that we specified. So, in many of the cases, we have the exact same company and even the same driver doing the same route, they just had to sharpen their pencil. And, you know, that price varied anywhere from no savings to about one-third less than what we were paying for the same thing last year. But we, we let them tell us how they were going to do it. So, one company could have put a bid in to take two kids and given us a price. And another company could have put a bid in to take three kids on the same vehicle and given us a different price. And we, we, we did some analysis and worked it in a way that, you know, was most beneficial to the, to the school department and the taxpayer. And we're interested to see if it can work again next year.
And to Mr. Gillis's point, and Mrs. Kelly had asked in a finance subcommittee for the viewing public, no child with special needs who has special ed transportation will be negatively impacted. Their situation is not going to change. And again, it would be a huge tutorial to understand special ed, the special ed transportation budget and the routes that have to be created for these children who go really across the state. Really, they have to be within, is it 90 minutes on?
Well, I mean, generally, it's an hour unless you're in a unique program where it's the only school in the region and some, you know, then it, then it's kind of waived.
And so, we had to budget what we budgeted. Again, if we and Mr. Gillis worked right up to Labor Day, working with these companies, creating these contracts and did an outstanding job and a lot of, no offense, luck, that we were able to have the savings in special ed transportation because we would be coming to you and having to look at, we don't have this money in any other line. And so, that's why we're able to look for the transfer. And to Mrs. Kelly's point, if we look at and make a proposal to you about changing and adjusting school times, my goal is, this is only for a year, and then we'll go back to nine buses, knowing that we've set ourselves up to succeed with the right amount of time between the school start and dismissal times. We were on the brink and again, you can't say to people who drop off their children and know that they have a half hour, 20 minutes to get to work, here's a surprise, we're going to change your child's start time by 15 minutes once the school year started. But if we have this study and give parents and guardians sufficient notice that next year, there will be an adjustment on the start and the end times of the schools.
Ms. Peggy Jones?
Comment and question, I agree with Mary about, Mary Kelly, about the, it's a shame that the 54,000 would go. But on the other hand, it's also important for the community to remember that we don't just pay for the teachers. You know, we pay for the kids from beginning to end and that includes the buses. Education is not cheap. I mean, the teacher part is very well taken, the point about that. And it just reminds me of how much we pay for and are mandated to pay for that is outside of the classroom, buses being one of them. And this is unreasonable, the amount of time the kids are on buses, whether they're high school kids or elementary kids. They have to get home and study for one. So, my question is, the 54, that's coming out of the 135,000 you mentioned here. So, we'd still have money left over from that 135 to other unexpected expenses around special ed or other transportation.
Right. Once we finalize the decision, playing the little phone tag with the bus company today, spent a fair amount of time in, in negotiations, which kept me away from the phone. Once we finalize that and then implement it, assuming it's working, you know, I can report back to you on, you know, on that.
Mr. Walker?
Mary, so, when would you hope to have this analysis of start and end times done? And how much notice would we hope to give parents for the following year?
Well, every month I meet with the PTO presidents, which they're a great bellwether group for me. And I trust them, they trust me. And so, I meet with them next week and I think within, I, I think people have to know, my target would be October, November, before Thanksgiving, to do the study and make the recommendation as to what the times will be next year.
Great.
You think that's aggressive?
I, I think that's great.
I think that's really aggressive. I think it's great for us to set up that, but I think at this point-
Well, that was my plan, November, October, probably because I want this solved. But we'll talk to the PTO presidents if they want to give us through the holidays till, you know, the end of December. You know, I don't think people are actually making their daycare your right for next year until December, but we want to get that, it's sort of like the school choice, get it over with, do the study and make the proposals. So, if you're comfortable with that, and I ask the PTO presidents to give us till, through December, and we'll get that over with and make proposals to you. And we'll give parents ample opportunity in forums to give us their input and surveys.
Ms. Sheridan?
I want to thank you for putting the safety of our children first, above and beyond the dollars that we need to spend to make this happen because this is a safety issue. And I have seen by being here at the high school, the angst it's caused all of the administration in terms of, you know, worrying about these children that were on buses for long hours, for long periods of time. So, thank you to the administration for doing this and thank you to the parents for their patience during this time of transition.
And some of the children weren't on the buses for a long time. I think the major, I think a larger part of the problem was that they weren't being picked up one time. So, they were at the school-
Yeah.
-after dismissal too long. So, it really wasn't, it was a, I think that was really the major part. I know Mr. Gillis referred to the timing, but it was, and we have to compliment the teachers. Stephanie Nephew and her staff have stayed right there with the students until the buses arrive.
Mr. Walker? Okay. Mr. Gray?
This is for Matt. I'm sure you, the answer is yes, but have you exhausted every avenue for resolving this issue instead of spending 54,000 on, on renting a bus for a year? Like, for example, what if we didn't have the money? Then what would happen?
Well, one of the avenues is, is what we're going to be doing with Pierce to get those buses out a little bit sooner, save us five to seven minutes hopefully. That would be one. That'd be the first one with the least amount of impact to folks. You know, when you want to start changing the, the schedule of school, starting dismissal time, we also have to take a look at, you know, the parents, the staff and whatnot, but also instructional time. We can't just, you know, cut the day shorter and then hope that we, we meet all our instructional requirements with the state. You know, not to make light of it, but I'm like the professional cheapskates. My job to make sure we're, we're paying as little as possible and getting, getting the most bang for our buck. I would just be scrubbing every other line item and working through and, and having the other folks that work there and hold them hostage for a few thousand dollars here, a few thousand dollars there, because I don't really think there is another answer other than putting a bus on the road. I really don't. Because it comes down to, to time or buses and we just, we just don't have the time.
So, so the answer would be that this is just a one-year thing?
Yes.
And then next year, you'll change the times?
Yes. If we had more time, then we could have more time between the start and end time of schools, we could go back to the nine buses.
And to Mr. Cohen's point, 54,000, or if we ever need two buses, I've often said that, you know, we would, would we have to let a teacher go? Would we have to let staff go? Would we have to go into our limited text material and supply line? We can't turn off the heat and the lights to get the money for this bus. So, it's, again, we live to our budget and Mr. Gillis didn't give himself enough credit. The finance subcommittee has followed this. This bed transportation contract over the years, if people have been paying attention, was a volatile number. And you have to provide this transportation. And we've been in contracts, we were in a collaborative with CHAMs so that, that we're, the Milton Public Schools and the budget that we're able to do this, again, we wouldn't have been able to do it last year.
No, because we're in a, we're in a contract that we couldn't really get out of without a lawsuit and maybe, maybe multiple lawsuits. So, we, we had to honor that deal even though it didn't, you know, produce the savings as projected. And I mean, there's more than one way to collaborate and, and the way it got structured, it turned out, wasn't really too efficient economically. The concept was there, but the restrictions, whenever you write specifications for a good or service, you can make them as tight or as loose as you want. And the more specific you make them, it starts at a certain point to become more and more expensive because there's fewer and fewer people who can provide the service. And people that know their competitors and know their business, they know they can get you. And when, when, when they, when they think they've got you and, and they put the price in and you're signed up and you're locked in for the deal, you're stuck. So, it's, you know, it sounds easy, but you really have to know what it is you want and what it is, what, what's going to drive those costs. And I don't think there was probably the understanding on how transportation costs work from the folks that put that together.
I thought Mr. Walker was going to ask, when is this plan going to go into place? So, if the, if the neighbors, the meeting was positive-
Mary, when you, when you start to anticipate my questions, you're making me think you might be my wife.
So, but it would have been a great question. You were right on the edge of asking it. If the neighbors were successful, the Pierce will go to the rear tomorrow?
Monday.
Monday. The Pierce will start, the buses will go to the rear of Pierce on Monday. And Pam Dorsey wants, her last remark to me was to decide, hopefully on one bus, Mrs. Kelly, and get all these new bus passes in the mail to all the children and making sure that they get them. That can't be Monday because we can't have any room for error here. So, the new bus assignments will happen tentatively next Wednesday.
The new bus assignments would be for Cunningham Colicott students and possibly the Glover-Tucker students. Well, not possibly, for many of the Glover-Tucker students. They're not going to change for the high school students. Just the way we get them out is going to change.
Ms. Peggy Jones?
One question or thought. I know that there was, there were problems with this planning because many parents signed up late for buses. I have to be truthful, when I paid for two buses, I signed up at the last possible moment, which softened the day before school because $700 is a lot of money. And I know a couple of parents mentioned to me, isn't there a way? And I know it causes more work and we don't have people to pay, to do the work, but a budget, a plan, a way to pay, start paying in June, July? I mean, I don't know. And I'm sure you've thought that through and we can't hire another person to take payment plans on the buses. But think about it, it's a lot of money to pay out in August for your kids' buses. I know there's a cap of $1,000, right? For the buses? 850? Well, I always was right under the 850, so I had to pay mine upfront and I was late every single year.
You could have enjoyed the cap if you had more school-age kids.
Right. I should have had more kids so I could pay less for the buses. But, you know, is there a way to creatively think outside the box about how to help parents with that? Because that's why parents are signing up late, later than they should, at least what they told me.
We have, we have talked about that a little bit and we intend to start the registration process earlier, which gives people, people more time to pay before the school year.
Graduated payments?
We, we have not advertised it, but we've accepted people that have wanted to pay in increments. Well, they, they ask, you know? And generally, we don't turn people away and now that it's public, I guess we're going to have to come up with a, with a, with a structure. You know, we don't, we want to get the kids to school, we want to educate them, you know, we do want to feed them. And people that are struggling with it, we do work with them. But we don't want to, we don't want to make it so that everybody's on a payment plan, you know, just because they, they, you know, we can be. We haven't created a financial criteria for it. So, yes, generally, we've cut it in half. created a financial criteria for it. So, yes, generally, we've cut it in half.
Okay. Good to know.
But I think the point is well-taken. If we started earlier, you can make four payments, six payments, whatever it is, whatever the deadline is during the school year that you'd like to make sure that everybody's paid up.
We would like to have everybody registered, you know, before June is over the following year, so we have enough time to, to plan for the buses. I mean, when we set the routes, we try to pick up all the kids that we know that have registered for the bus. You know, we only have about 1,100 kids that ride the bus out of, out of roughly 3,900 students. If we budgeted to give all the kids a ride, we'd have a lot more buses, and we'd be wasting money. So to be efficient and effective, we just need people to tell us they're going to take the bus. And if they're on a payment plan and they've made payment, we, we, we hold that spot.
And so I think this gives a new appreciation to people who don't understand what the public schools do. I would analogize it to the full-day kindergarten, and Mrs. Kelly was our conscience, and we just raced into full-day K and made it work with the existing staff. We never knew about installment plans and paying upfront and others paying. And when you take the 10 or the 12-month plan, somebody has to monitor those payments, they don't all come in in time, somebody has to go after the payments. So it's interesting that the public schools were, you know, the business side of it, we heard Dr. Ranjio say business, and I never think of us as a business. But with full-day kindergarten, I'll tell you that we learned after two years, and we said, if we don't have your deposit in your first two months, you can't come to the first day of full-day kindergarten, because that set the patent that people had to pay. And for those people who pay their full tuition, we have a responsibility that everybody has to pay on time. And really, and I would tell you that we have a new employee in the Milton Public Schools who comes from another district. And that employee, who is a high-level employee, told me that in the district that she came from, to collect full-day kindergarten money, they had to hire a, what's it called?
Collection agency.
A collection agency to go after the full-day kindergarten money. Well, we have Lori Dunn, and Matt Gillis, John Phelan, and myself. And we collected to the dime, and I would tell, I think it's important for the taxpayers to know, that we, if somebody doesn't pay their bills, then we would say to a family, we can't let you enter into any other fee-based programs in Milton. So unless you pay your full-day kindergarten bill, even if it's free and reduced, whatever amount, you can't go into the community schools, you can't go into the lunch program, you can't have a bus. We have a responsibility to fully fund those programs, and that's a part of the job that we're not trained in, but we've had to become good at while we're still dealing with children and their parents. But how about that neighboring community hired a collection agency to, so they got all the funds for full-day kindergarten?
Wow.
I know this is more information than anybody wanted, but this is the nature of the work and the background behind the transportation. I called it an issue to about a week ago, and then I called it a problem.
Which community was that?
Well, that's common knowledge. Yeah. It's common knowledge in Cohasset.
Very interesting.
In Cohasset, wow.
Right. And so, so, and so Janet Sheehan really recognized our efforts and the policies and procedures we've put in. But Mrs. Kelly has said to us in Finance Subcommittee that you should chart the costs of the program on what other personnel has been required to implement the full-day kindergarten. You know, we look at it and think that we need X amount of teachers and furniture for those extra rooms, but it's the business side of the ledger. And I've also said that we have to look at our full-day kindergarten grant and what impact the full-day kindergarten had on our transportation issues.
Anything else, Ms. Kelly?
I just had one follow-up, and it's on Ms. Sheridan's comment. Just to clarify, this issue has not caused students to be unsafe.
No.
It's just been, you know, we just, it isn't where we want it to be.
Right. Nobody was ever at risk, nobody was not safe.
No was ever at risk, but...
And I think the lie, if the, it wasn't so, the bus rides were long, the bus ride's going to be the same tomorrow. Some of the bus routes have changed. They've devised some new bus routes. The bus routes weren't long, the buses weren't getting to the school on time, so the get-home time, children were waiting at the schools. And that's not, that's not what we want for Milton Public School students.
Well, seeing no more questions, we have motion on the floor, which is to authorize the administration to spend up to $108,000 from the Instructional Services General Expenses line item for the purpose of, not from the Special Education Transportation line item for Instructional Services General Expenses for the use of the buses.
I thought it was 54.
No, it's up to 108.
Up to 108.
Up to two buses, depending whether they need them or not.
Oh, up to, okay.
All right. So we're, that was the motion on the table. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to, thank you, Matt, and John, and to Pam Dorsey and all the parents and teachers. The superintendent's evaluation, my self-evaluation I'll have for our meeting two weeks from tonight, I told you it would be done, and it's not done. I'll get that to you before, so that you can, in your packet the Friday before. A school committee member had asked me about the policies around the evaluation of the superintendent. I brought those policies tonight for you. I also drafted with Mr. Pavlichek, Chairman Pavlichek, a timeline. It's a new involved process. That's why the committee member asked for a copy of the policies. Chairman Pavlichek is brought to my attention. Do you want to explain?
The, the policy that we have on the books was written several years ago before the change in the open meeting. And the policy that is currently on our books involves an evaluation form that we all fill out, submit into the chair, the chair collates into a document that we then present at school committee and, and discuss. That's actually runs counter to some of the issues in the open meeting law, as it was changed last, end of last fiscal year, two year, year ago, June, in that all those documents would be public documents and so forth and so on. So we, last year, we did it differently. Last fall, we had, people prepared their own comments, but we had a discussion at this table where it was jointly discussed as to the superintendent's evaluation. And we went around the table and created the evaluation that way. Then the chair, as I recall, wrote an evaluation based on the discussion at this table. That's in line with the open meeting law. That's the procedure I expect we will follow again this year, our policy statement to the contrary, notwithstanding, which does also bring the issue that we need to put that policy back to the policy subcommittee to be revised and brought into compliance with the open meeting law. So our, our policy subcommittee is going to need to take up the, the technical details of the evaluation of the superintendent. So that's, that is my plan. So if Mary is presenting us with her self-evaluation at our, prior to our next meeting, depending how, soon prior to our next meeting, we would either be prepared to talk about her evaluation at the next meeting, get our feedback, or it would have to be the meeting after that, depending on, on what the timeframe is, what we get the document.
And I came up with a timeline that you can have the next meeting and still make the November deadline. So I'm going to give you at the end of this meeting the policies. I'll hold the timeline that I came up with and email you a new timeline tomorrow, and I'll also email you the policies, whichever your pleasure is. I also brought tonight, at the last meeting I gave out from your retreats, I took your input, I worked with the administrators on our full-day retreat and came up with the district-wide goals. Two members sent me excellent edits. I've incorporated those edits into version two. I'll email you a copy tomorrow morning. I've brought you a hard copy tonight. I'd ask you to send me any further edits you have as we speak. Principals are starting to work with their staff and their site councils to work on really tailoring their school improvement plans using these district-wide goals, which are my goals, incorporating what your goals were from the retreat. So I brought version two for you tonight. MCAS, as I referred to earlier, tonight was, the results were going to be public Friday. We got a flash email this afternoon that on the 19th, the week of the 19th, early during the week of the 19th, MCAS will be public. We plan, we've already began, begun planning our presentation to you. So our next school committee meeting, you'll have the district's MCAS results. We'll send those out the Friday before, so that you can study them, have your questions ready. Martha Sherman, John Phelan, and other personnel will be here. We'll have presentations on our advanced placement and SAT data that's coming, the SAT data will be coming out today and tomorrow. We'll put those at future school committee meetings and get that data out to you. The other night, we had our first Milton Foundation for Education Board meeting. You're represented by school committee member Mary Kelly. And I want to touch upon three notes. One is that March 10th or 8th, March, I believe, March 10th, big beach ball?
Beach, yes.
Yes, big beach.
Triple B.
That's going to be this, the theme of this year's celebration. If you say it enough and you hear it enough, you'll own it, like last year. What was the theme last year?
Big backyard.
Excellent. The big backyard.
Bash.
Bash, bash.
The triple B.
And so they've already begun their planning, very exciting. The chairs are Meg Castor and Laura Conway. They've already met with Milton Public School staff, and I'll bring you back. And for the public, over the years, the chairs come in and they meet with, they have a plan to do every discipline. But I put lots of different Milton Public School staff in front of them, and we find the recipe for success is if the chairs are passionate about the theme. And they're passionate about literacy, so they're going to be raising funds for classroom libraries in every elementary schools. Again, a phenomenal idea. Also at the peer school and at the high school, they're still tailoring what the theme is going to be at the high school. And so you can look for information on that. School committee member Kelly brought up a very interesting point when they're, in their aggressive fundraising discussions, they talked about their advertising and having companies or industry actually fund schools or grades with these classroom libraries. So Ms. Kelly asked, brought up our policies on fundraising from private sources and advertising. They talked about, they analogized, the biotech lab has a plaque outside with all of the companies that funded. But I'm going to give you tonight, an email tomorrow for you to review, so that we can give the MFE some guidance on that, any limits that they might have. As I previewed this material, I think that it would be a correspondence between the MFE with the board and myself, again, approving if we were going to put a plaque, plaque card in every book or any kind of, what am I looking to say, a plaque in any school, that we would approve. I analogized it to working with Kate Sumner. There were two organizations that we refused to take their money for banners in the gym. And so, again, they, every banner was cleared through me, what we were going to put on the banner and what companies we would take money from to advertise in our field house or on the walkway going to the high school. So I have that for you tonight. Chairman Kelly?
I, I would just ask that we consult legal, quite frankly, on this issue, because I don't want to run afoul of anything else. So I think they had mentioned there are some districts that are doing this. If maybe we could ask our legal counsel to do a little research on that and maybe give us a proposal for a policy that would cover us.
Excellent. We have new board members that will put it out in my email blast, so that everyone's aware of who those new MFE board members are. In the mail to every resident will be coming, and I brought for you tonight our adult education programming. It looks very exciting, and anyone who, who's here at night can see citizens of every age availing themselves of that program. Last night, Mr. Phelan and I had the pleasure of going to the Pierce Open House. I don't know, I haven't seen that many people in one place except on TV. It was absolutely extraordinary. It speaks to Milton Public School parents who are busy with their families at night and working, and the parents and guardians, and the attendance rate at these events in the Milton Public Schools, it just, it's heartwarming. And again, you can see rushing in with their schedules, ready to go to the kickoff and then to every class. One parent came and said, I'm skipping the kickoff. My child's explained to me how to get to his first period class, and walked right by me and went into the front door, ready to roll to have that first seat. And I saw the teachers come, all excited about speaking to the parents, and you can all reflect on your own experiences. John, James Jett and the secretaries told me the feedback was unbelievable from past parents last night, and it was really heartwarming. For the public, it's on the front of the web, but any high school parent tomorrow night, and communicated to the school committee, is the Milton High School Open House beginning in the auditorium at 7:00. The Glover Elementary Open House beginning next Tuesday at 6:30. Cunningham, Wednesday night, beginning at 6:30. Thursday night, Tucker, beginning at 6:30. And finally, that next Tuesday night, September 27th, 6:30, the Collicott School. And so, speaking to Milton Public School staff, who put a lot of pride into these presentations, and, but to Milton Public Schools' parents and guardians, attendance is not an issue, and parental support in the Milton Public Schools. And there were, there were a lot of happy and a lot of anticipation among families going in to meet their children's teachers last night. And it was really heartwarming and very encouraging. And to that point, at our retreat this summer, the school committee had asked for elementary parents to be communicated with, what are the subjects that are taught in the individual grades in K through 5. And so, Mr. Phelan and our curriculum leaders took your request, and just like that aggressive November 1st, they've worked tirelessly. And I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Phelan to see what they have prepared for, to give out to parents.
Thank you, Superintendent Gormley. As Mary suggested, per the school committee and the administration's work in the retreat, we want to make sure that every parent knows what their child will know and be able to do at the end of each grade. We had a curriculum meeting with our directors, coordinators, and department heads, K to 12, to talk about what this will look like on the web and what this will look like when parents go to open houses this fall. What I have in front of me, which I will give you, these are packets, there's a kindergarten, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 brochure available for you to preview. They will be distributed in every classroom across the district this fall. What we are hoping to be able to accomplish is that when every parent goes into their child's classroom or guardian goes into the classroom, that they will know across the system what is expected of their child in each grade across the disciplines that they have in our offer during the day. As an example, I will choose kindergarten. If you see the front, it's our schools, the school seal, and it goes into language arts, gives you the expectations, mathematics, with bulleted areas of different tasks, tasks and standards and expectations, science and engineering concepts, history and social science, and we have the specialist classes as well. This is just the beginning of what we will offer to all parents via the web, across every one of our disciplines, across every one of our grades. This will begin the process that we have started to put every curriculum on the web in a very parent-user-friendly way this fall. That work will be done to a certain level by mid-October, where every parent will be able to click on their child's grade and get what their child is to know and be able to do K to 8. And they will be able to click on their child's course at the high school and get the syllabus and what their child would know and be able to do in that course. The next layer of work that we'll follow will be the connection of the common core and the standards that are attached to our scope and sequence documents and curriculum, and that should be ready probably by the first of the year. So we are approaching that task in layers. We wanted to focus on the parent-friendly version first, and then work towards a more... We wanted to focus on the parent-friendly version first, and then work towards a more detailed look of our curriculum, and provide that deeper understanding and knowledge, and we will prepare that through now until the first of the year. We look forward-
And if I might, if I might interrupt you for a minute. Assistant Superintendent Phelan has, works with all of the curriculum leaders, and they have a very creative communication plan to put all of that curriculum online. Ms. Kelly has asked for this over the last two years, and putting it in on different levels, so that a parent who wants the detail can go further in, but an overview for those parents who are looking.